Good evening, I'd like to call to order the Board of Education regular meeting, Forest Hills Local School District this Monday, January 22, 2018. Mr. Jufrey, would you please call roll?
Mrs. Barber?
Here.
Ms. Choice?
Here.
Dr. Heiss?
Here.
Mr. Fruman?
Here. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Exits are right over there behind you. Can I have a motion to adopt the agenda, please?
Go ahead.
I'll make a motion to adopt the agenda.
Second.
Mr. Jufrey?
Ms. Choice?
Yes.
Dr. Heiss?
Yes.
Mrs. Barber?
Yes.
Mr. Fruman?
Yes. Items 3.1 through and 3.2, approval of minutes?
Move to approve the minutes at a special meeting of December 15, 2017, and a regular meeting on December 18, 2017.
Second.
Mr. Jufrey?
Dr. Heiss?
Yes.
Ms. Choice?
Yes.
Mrs. Barber?
Yes.
Mr. Fruman?
Yes. Item 4.1, correspondence, Mr. Prebels?
I don't have any to see.
Mr. Jufrey?
No, sir.
Members? Procedure for public comments, which was sitting in front of me. This is a meeting of the Board of Education in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business and is not to be considered a public or community meeting. There is a time for public participation during the meeting as indicated in the agenda under public commentary. Individuals who like to share their opinions or comments concerning a topic on the Board's agenda should list the agenda item or topic on a public participation sheet, and those are available up front here. Sign your name, include your address and telephone number, and give the sheet to our administrative assistants. You'll be recognized during the appropriate portion of the meeting. Remarks should be addressed to the Board as a group, be within five-minute timeframe, and if several people wish to speak on the same topic, we may adjust that time limit. If people are talking, we will strictly impose the five minutes, and if I cut somebody off, it's not my intent to be rude, it's my intent to move the meeting forward. Item 5.1, Mr. Prebels?
Yes, sir. The Ohio School Boards Association is celebrating School Board Recognition Month in January of 2018, and to build awareness and understanding of the vital function an elected Board of Education plays in our society and in the state of Ohio. School Board Recognition Month honors the members of Ohio's 719 city, exempted village, local, and joint vocational boards of education and educational service centers governing boards for their commitment to providing quality public education to Ohio's school children. The Forest Hills School District is joining with other districts throughout the state to recognize the important contributions school board members make to their communities. I'd like to thank each of you this evening on behalf of myself and the entire Forest Hills staff and administration community. I'd like to thank each board member for their contribution to improve public education, specifically in Forest Hills, and certainly for all that you do to provide the best opportunities possible for each and every student we are privileged to serve. Your leadership is appreciated, as is the amount of time you each have devoted and will devote in the future to provide continued leadership in our school district. So, this evening, we'd like to congratulate you, we'd like to thank you, and wish you the best in leadership as we continue through the 2018 school year and beyond. And so I am honored to give to you these certificates signed by the Ohio School Board Association President, which happens to be Randy Smith, who was unable to be with us this evening.
He is with us.
But he is with us, but not in person. So, thank you, Mr. Smith, for sending this to yourself and others, and for reminding us that this is a very, very important evening, and not only do we have the certificates, but we do have some other tokens of our appreciation. So, at this time, Mr. Broadwater said he would be happy to help me pass out the certificates and packages.
First is Elizabeth Barber.
Thank you.
That's for all the things in the future. Dee Dee Choice?
Thank you.
Mr. Jim Fruman, our Board President. Dr. Forrest Heiss. And Mr. Randall Smith.
Thank you.
Mike just shook your hand. And we also have...
We get gifts on the first night.
Thank you. I was right on top.
Thank you. It always feels awkward at first board meeting.
Thank you very much again for your service.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 6.1, public comments. Do we have any cards? No? All right, then we will proceed to item 7.1, future-ready middle school and high school. Ms. Adams?
Hey. Well, I'm gonna start this evening by inviting Megan Lawson up with a team of students and a teacher who've been a part of this process with us as we reimagine education and learning in Forest Hills. And so a few students are gonna present, as they did actually in their classroom, to help get us thinking in different ways, really thinking about the student experience. So, we're very grateful that they joined us tonight.
Awesome. Just a quick introduction, I'm really proud to be up here with these awesome people. So, I had stumbled upon a quote that I really enjoyed recently that I think will be a nice segue into the presentation, and it's a quote from Dr. Amy Fast, who says, "The saddest and most ironic practice in schools is how hard we try to measure how students are doing and how rarely we ever ask them." And so when we went on this adventure for visioning, you know, and rethinking high school, we knew it was gonna be important to tap into the hearts of our kids. And so we actually did a design thinking challenge with seniors in the fall, and it was on a day they didn't have to be at school, and we thought for sure, like, will they, are they gonna, will they come? Will they come hang out with us and do this design thinking challenge? And we were overwhelmed by the fact that over 30 seniors joined us to do some visioning about the future and how we could reinvent high school and improve the student experience for kids in the future. And I mean, I think that's the definition of true leadership, leaving something better than it was the way that you found it. And so I was really inspired by that group, and I got to meet, Jack Polifka was there, you know, for the senior design thinking challenge, and I think he must have enjoyed his experience enough to bring back his experience to his awesome teacher, Erin Horn, who teaches business and entrepreneurship at Turpin. And so they really went on this adventure with us, and they were originally doing some work with startup companies, and they were so inspired by our mission that they started thinking more deeply about how they would change school in the future. And so I wanted to thank Erin and thank Sean Nason, who did some great work with this group, helping them put together a pretty cool presentation. They're not gonna give you their full presentation, I'm just gonna briefly introduce, that's Jack Polifka and Max Murphy, and they're just gonna talk for about five minutes about their thoughts and their vision for the future, so.
All right, so, as she said, I went to the senior internship day to redesign school. We were at Wilson with Mr. Buck over there, and what we noticed was that all the kids we talked to were happy, like, all of them were excited to go to school, they were learning stuff they were interested in, and like, we talked to them, we're like, "Oh, what are you doing today?" They're like, "Oh, we're learning how to code." It's like, "Okay, I don't know how to do that, and I'm a senior in high school." Like, that's the future of, like, jobs, right? And so we just, when we took it back to Mrs. Horn, we started thinking, like, "Okay, how can we make high school, like, more productive for students, make them enjoy it, make them wanna come?" And the problems that we found came down to mostly AP classes, where it's, kids feel like they have to take these classes, like, just for the college credit, it looks good on college applications, but like, nobody wants to take them. It's all just, "Oh, I wanna, like, get into college, oh, here's this test I wanna take to get into college or get more money." And it's about subjects they don't care about, or they're not engaging. So, the classes themselves, they limit the teachers, making them teach to the test, and making the students just learn information and memorizing it and spitting it back out for the test. So, what we wanted to do was create more interactive classes that might combine subjects into multiple subjects. Like, one teacher we talked to came up with the idea of combining physics, math, art, English by having students create a house, like, design the house, create it, and act as if you were gonna build it. That would include designing it, figuring out all the physics and math behind it, and then obviously writing up a report and being able to communicate those ideas. So, we came up with a schedule that we actually created, and then we reached out to Hudson High School, who, Mr. Walsh says hi, Mr. Broadwater? Yeah? And he says that their best day of the week is Wednesday, because it gets, or every day they start at 8:15, I believe, but Wednesday the teachers come in at 7:20 and just have time for these professional learning communities that you all love that word so much, right? So, it gives them time to work together, talk over, like, how they wanna teach things, how they wanna, like, combine classes, so it's all productive information. And so we really thought that schedule was productive, 'cause it would not only help kids sleep in, but also give teachers and students a better way to combine things and make kids want to come learn what they're learning. So, like, I guess it's a block schedule, and so this would allow kids to sleep in, which Max can tell you all about.
So, I mean, I'm gonna try to work into that, but I was told not to bring this up. So, I mean, I made a little bit of petition, Mr. Prebels. I, I'm not gonna try to go into that a little too much, but I made a petition, it's down now, and I apologize. It was a joke originally, I would like to be known. Anyway, so, one of my, the big things I looked into was the sleep, sleeping in aspect of everything. So, I mean, I can't say I'm like, I do a ton of AP and honors classes, I'm in one honors and one AP, but I don't get a lot of sleep, honestly, I probably get, like, six hours, and nationally, National Sleep Television found that you want about nine and a half, nine and a quarter hours of sleep for a teenager to properly function. And I mean, if you ask any of my teachers from last semester, I did fall asleep in a class or two, maybe, I mean, probably can be rounded up for four or five, but we're not gonna go into that. I mean, I did maintain a 3.7 GPA, but anyway, sleeping, that's a hard one for me, because I feel like I don't get enough sleep to maintain the workload that, like, I have to carry out through with school, and I work, and I play soccer, so it's hard for me to get that in. But then, another thing, like, the project-based classes, I mean, it's kinda shifting subjects here. We kinda like, we do all these things in different classes that I feel like can be intertwined in the different classes to create, like, a project or something, 'cause I feel like sometimes it's repeated in different, like, classes. So, I, like, a couple of examples are, Ms. Horn's business class, like, I was in her business management class, and we designed a box down Newtown at this church, it was called the Giving Box, and I think there's stuff on the Forest Hills website about that and their Twitter and everything, if you wanted to read into that. But we eventually, we designed it, and we planned everything out, and how we communicated with them, and it kinda put all these elements, like, aspects into, like, how we planned it accordingly.
Another example of this was here at Nagel, and specifically in Mr. Preston's seventh grade science class, we did a project about fracking that, like, I remember to this day as being just engaging. We reached out to these, like, leading researchers in the subject, and we were doing the hands-on research, like, alongside Mr. Preston, instead of having him stand up in front of us teaching, "Okay, like, here's this, here's this next slide." Like, we were hands-on doing it, like, learning how to talk to people, learning how to write emails to people, and then also learning the science behind it. So, I think that's one of the biggest issues with school, is that we're not learning, like, how to do everything, it's just we're learning, like, this is this, this is that. When, like, kids don't care about the subjects, where if you can engage them in the subject, then we think that would just be more beneficial for everybody. I guess that's all we have, five minutes?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, we presented to you in the fall what we are planning to do for future-ready middle school and high school. So, today's purpose really is just to kinda catch you up with where we are, so we are making sure that we communicate. And again, we wanted to start with that student voice, to show how important it is for us to capture the student experience, to involve our partners in our eclectic vision for the future. So, our hope is to obviously align here with the Forest Hills vision, creating innovative pathways for our students and choices as we connect with career ed. Go onto the next slide. And our aim this year was really to focus on the master schedule of the high schools, and our administrators and teacher teams have been working very hard to rethink how time might be looking for them, so that we can, A, be sure that teachers are no longer working in an isolated silo, but they're more collaborative in their nature, and are able to offer more opportunities like the guys were suggesting today, where different subjects maybe interact with others, where it's more project-based and you're connecting with the community. We ultimately hope to really rethink the senior year, and we are, we're taking steps in that way. One example is, we're partnering with UPS to start looking at how we can offer some internships and experiences with students. That's pretty early in its infancy stages, but that's the kind of thing, is that we connect with real-world businesses, to have students be able to explore job opportunities and make connections from what they're learning in the classroom with a future career possibility. We're looking at pathways to make sure that the work that we do at Nagel kinda feeds and leads into different course options that you'll be able to take in high school. So, we're continuing that focus. You've heard about Career Cruising, which is a product we've brought on board this year, thanks to the Forest Hills Foundation as one of our partners, to help students really start at an earlier age exploring all the possibilities of what their future can hold. And then taking classes and building in experiences that actually make that happen. And then finally, our partnerships, I'm gonna talk more about that later, but just, we can't do this alone. We know that it's really not gonna be beneficial to change education, working in an educational silo, that it's really important that we bring in partners, businesses, community, higher education, people to work with us to design the future of education. So, I've asked Megan to come up and talk a little bit about how we've been able to incorporate teacher and student voice, kinda what their suggestions are, and the things that we're wrestling with as a team to help move this work forward.
Well, our senior presenters did a great job of summarizing a lot of the conversation. We had some great opportunities to connect with students between the Senior Design Thinking Challenge, between Erin Horn's entrepreneurship class, we had students in the Teacher Academy, it was a perfect connection for them, with Nate Lynch to do some presentations for us. And a lot of themes that emerged, they mentioned, you know, the research behind student sleep cycles and adolescence, and what time, you know, their bodies should be going to sleep and waking up in the morning. We had a lot of research around real-world learning opportunities and making career connections and making the learning relevant and engaging, and then creating flexible scheduling that allows students to do that kind of engaging work and allowing the schedule to change when the needs change on a daily basis for kids. So, those are just some examples of the many things that came up with our work with students, and then we can segue into our work with teachers. You know, our partnership with teachers has been, I can't even express just how valuable it's been. I've been so impressed by the teachers in this district, and many teachers just volunteered, they already are spending all these countless hours, and inside the classroom, outside the classroom, they're saying, "Hey, I wanna dream with you on this topic," and their level of passion and care has been really inspiring to me. And so we received many presentations from cadres of teachers who came around this topic. And it was amazing how the themes, the same themes were emerging, you know, among them as well. Another thing that, you know, was very evident among our teachers was their desire for career connections, and their desire to get students into more internships and externship and real-world opportunities, and to make those kinda connections. And so, you know, I think I've already summarized really the four areas, but I can't stress enough just how evident it was that we have these themes that are really starting to come together, and I wanna thank the administrators for braving the wilderness with me on this, because we didn't really know what we were gonna build, and we haven't built the things yet, but we certainly have a vision, and now it's just a matter of trying to make that vision a reality.
And included in this presentation is the video from the Teacher Academy. I didn't play it tonight, 'cause it's about seven or eight minutes long, but I thought maybe that would be something that you would be interested in seeing. The Workforce Development Committee, I mentioned this to you, Elizabeth is also a member of this team with Scott and I, and at the moment, the team is working to really study and analyze the skillsets that employers in the Anderson Township Newtown area are looking for, and to understand their challenges that they need to overcome over the next five years. So, it's a little bit of just getting to know them in terms of a relationship, cataloging who the actual businesses are in our community, because there really is no list of that. So, we're trying to create it, as well as dig into, like, what their needs are and what they see as the future, so that when we are ready to position ourselves to build partnerships, we can make some natural connections and make sure that the walls of the school are open and we're collaborating in a two-way method. The community mapping, we talked a little bit about in the fall, but now we've actually had the experience to start this. And we were fortunate to take a team to a High Ames event that was led by Tim Cubic, who is a kind of renowned, around the world, actually, for developing community maps and working with schools and businesses on, it's called ARC, Authentic Relevant and Complex Teaching. And so what it does is it brings the outside world and the classroom together to create some amazing things. And there were a couple key things that we did as a team, and De Stone joined us as part of this, and we had a couple teachers and a couple administrators to join us, Donna Lawver was there to represent teachers. And we just started to map, actually, what are all the assets that Forest Hills has. And it really recalled us to talk, not only about businesses up and down Beechmont, but talents that are unique to Forest Hills, and different physical things that we have that are just unique in our community. And we literally began to build a map. And you can imagine how out of control that could get quickly, but it got the conversation going. And really, what our next step is to think about, how do we get more people at the table to help us dig into this process a little bit more, so that we're connecting community, teachers, students, and the real world to come together? And we kinda came up with a catchphrase that kinda stuck with us that week, I'm gonna read it to you, it says, and this is back to our map, "X marks the spot where students' interests intersect with real-world learning to change lives." And that "change lives" piece really came out, you know, administrator at the table brought this up, and where he was really coming from when he shared that piece that we all were like, "Yes," is these experiences that we can offer students, not only can inspire and push them toward a career or a future, but could also close the door and help students to decide what they don't wanna do. And so that's a savings for parents, and, you know, of time and money and talents and all that, and so all the work that we see that we can do in middle school and high school to expose students to these experiences, we think will have a value even down the road. So, our next step really will be to bring more stakeholders together, a really diverse team that can help us to take our community map and go a little bit further, so that we can kind of detail our vision and be able to communicate it really effectively with our partners, so that we are looking for a two-way relationship and not a, "We're just gonna show up at your door and ask for money." That's not really what we're going for. Another next step for us is the teamwork aspect. So, you've heard the input from students, the teacher voice, the administrator voice, we've had some surveys that have gone out, now some more surveys will go out to find out just people's opinion on where we are with the schedule, what people prefer, and we're gonna build that for next year, at least phase one of that, to make sure that we are providing more collaborative time for our teachers as step one. So, we're gonna have a team spending time on that. We are ready and poised to expand what we're doing with online and blended learning. So, we have some teachers who've already stepped forward, saying that they would like to have the personal finance class being something that's available. And so we see online learning as a way to prepare students for college, because they are gonna have some of those experiences where they have to learn to manage their time when they're not in such a face-to-face relationship with a teacher, as well as an opportunity for us to offer sometime, a course that we would maybe just be able to run at one high school, we'll be able to run at both high schools. And third, it would be a class that if a student is really ambitious, and they're trying to pack in a lot of things, and there just isn't time in the schedule, this would allow an opportunity beyond the school day to make that happen. So, we're gonna be looking at lifeguarding, as well as personal finance for next year, and really continue to work with our teachers to establish a system for online and blended learning that everyone agrees to. And then finally, we've tossed around this word a lot, it's means, it's more of a concept for us than anything at this point, but the creation of an innovation learning center. And our idea in mind with that has continued to emerge, both from students as well as administrators, this idea of bringing district programming together, so that something that we offer maybe at one school could be provided to two schools, or even, maybe even Nagel being a part of it, and that it becomes more interdisciplinary in nature. And through all of our research, we've really kind of honed in on the STEAM aspect of learning, the science, technology, engineering, the arts, and mathematics, as a way to bring learners and teachers together, as well as business, because we feel like business is definitely something that our students are going to college and studying and find a lot of interest in, but yet our business program is smaller. And so we wanna look at, how do we affordably expand that and offer new opportunities for students that's rooted in real-world learning? So, that kinda gives you a sense as to what we'll be working with here in the next several months, as we continue to progress through the year, and get the course guide out and get everybody making the selections. And I just wanna point out the middle school alignment, because the one thing we've been very intentional about is decisions that we make here for Nagel, it's really to, like, take them to high school, it's to build on, and it's not meant to be two separate programs. And so last year, as you know, we changed the master schedule to be able to offer more STEM opportunities for students, and really STEAM, the whole encore experience is really an interdisciplinary focus with the music, the art, STEM classes that are available, and we also have world language, obviously, for our eighth graders that has stayed intact. We've been able to, through flexible scheduling, offer more of a intervention enrichment plan that is more localized to their team, and it's not as a part of encore, it's part of core, and so we've been able to strengthen the fact that the teacher who knows the student the best is able to offer those interventions enrichments, and that relationship piece is huge. We've been able to really look at our continuum of special ed, you know, it's always something that we're working on with central office and the schools, is to provide, no matter what the students need, there's a continuum available for students to kinda plug in and to be able to have their needs met. And so we've been able to restructure and relook at that at Nagel. And we have, Anita this year has been working with gifted parents all throughout the district, kind of evaluating our service model in elementary school, as well as here at Nagel. And we are, we're still collecting all the final things, we're gonna be coming to you later on in the school year with how we see gifted, the gifted model progressing, and all the feedback that we've received. And finally, as you know, the fusion class, the class that can be confusing at times for people to understand. It's the class that really asks the teachers and the students to kinda come together and study their learning in a really interdisciplinary way, and build those six Cs that we always talk about, creativity, communication, I'm forgetting all the Cs right all of a sudden, the character ed, and critical thinking. And it's really where, like, the guys were saying earlier, it's where that you're not being told about these things, you're having to dig in. And I will say, there are some times with the students, like, when you ask them, "So, how is this working for you? How do you like this?" Students are really uncomfortable with ambiguity. They like everything kinda lined up and kind of in a nice little box at times, and just, "Tell me what you want me to do, tell me how to get an A." And we're saying, "Whoa, whoa, whoa, that's not what this class is about. This is about learning how to learn, learning how to investigate, learning how to question, learning how to be uncomfortable a little bit, and having to receive feedback from your teacher and go back and do it again," or receiving feedback from an outside doctor or lawyer or whoever that they're working with, that gives that real-world feedback. Next, I would also say that as we've worked in the elementary schools with building the hub of the school, the Learning Commons, we've been able to continue to transform the space here at Nagel. They've been able to develop a design studio, a think tank, a print and fabrication center, and there are also independent learning spaces in here. And so what we try to do with, is make sure that we have a continuum, and this is the easiest and fastest way for me to explain it, is it might start in kindergarten where you're using toilet paper rolls and pipe cleaners, and then it progresses as you're moving into middle school with more highly-technical toys that you can code and program to do things, where then by the time you're in high school, we're wanting you to be experienced with robotics at the top level, and that you're using real-world equipment. And so we're trying to make sure that whatever we do builds and connects for our students. And so the Nagel Learning Commons is a place where that happens, and you can see products around this room. And I definitely wanna take a moment to thank the PTA for their partnership, because although as a district, we've been able to provide some resources, the PTA has really come in and helped bolster that. And then finally, I just have some pictures here, they're a little bit distorted because of how I had to stretch them out, but I wanted to just talk about some of the learning. When you see these pictures, you're seeing students who are actually in this space, in this room, but you're also seeing them in classrooms across the building. You're not seeing kids who are sitting and getting, you're seeing small teams of students, you're seeing them with materials, you're seeing them making things. You see a drill in one of these pictures, or I guess you will in the next slide, sorry. You're seeing them make things that take their learning to a new level, it's helping them to become creators, not passive, "I'm just gonna sit and listen and then take a test and regurgitate back to you." They're really interacting with their world, and that's the kind of learning that we're wanting to see. They're building things, they're using design thinking, like, in that one picture where you're seeing like, almost like a cast on their legs, they're solving a problem that's real-world. And I just wanna give you a taste of some of the topics. So, in the eighth grade, they've been studying historical trends with the Civil War, and they've been able to, through a survey, decide which aspect of it would you like to they've been able to, through a survey, decide which aspect of it would you like to deepen your understanding in, in English, social studies, or science. And so depending on how the students responded to the survey, they went off with that teacher and they dug deeply into Civil War and the 1930s themes that they were focusing on as a group with that particular subject area. Again, typically, it would be, we would, each class would talk about it, but you would just go from class to class to class, maybe come up with a project in the end that was interdisciplinary. This had students digging in from the very beginning in the subject area that they cared about most in a really personalized way. The students also have learned forensic science, learned to investigate and build their claims, evidence, and reasoning. So not only are they strengthening their skills in science, their ability to communicate their ideas and to build those arguments that is so important. This gives just an example of a couple of projects that students have studied to just deepen their own knowledge. And it kind of, it's not necessarily something that we would have taught in the classroom, it's related to the standards, but maybe we wouldn't as teachers gone this way. One is colonization on Mars. The other is how do you prevent war? Another was how do equations in math, what do they have to do with sports? And finally, as you know, and we've talked about, the Design Thinking Challenge. Students have all been trained in the Stanford University Design Thinking to learn how to really think about a human-centered design, how to build things that make a difference and impact the world. And so that gives you a very broad picture of how Fusion is impacting the personalized learning of NAGL, how they're building real-world things and learning how to bring different elements into the classroom, business leaders, different people that they can research with, et cetera. So we're going to continue to assess where we are and make changes with student voice, teacher voice as we progress, but we're very pleased about how things are moving along and how they are aligning to the future-ready high school that we are trying to create here. So are there any questions?
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
I would like to thank the students who participated this evening. Your voice is extremely important. And everyone else, thank you for being here tonight. I would like to share with the board and those that are in the audience that the work that we're talking about is monumental, and it is a change that's occurring in education across not only our school district but others. And for us to be at the leading edge, for us to have it as part of our five-year strategic vision, for us to be mobilizing with students and parents and staff as well as committing resources to that, I think places us sort of on the front end of providing the best opportunities for students. And this past Saturday with Dr. Fagin's at Mercy Hospital, we saw another example of our students out and about with the design of their new birthing center, waiting room, and other things that we have done. We're increasing the number of partnerships that we have. Dee has been working with us closely, as is Elizabeth, with our Economic Development Committee. We're trying to create partnerships and have real-world experiences for our students without losing the robust curriculum that we have and the expectation for high performance in the classroom. And so that's a huge transition for us. And also, I'd like to thank the teachers who are all part of this because the change in the classroom has been dramatic over the last 10 to 15 years, and we're beginning to see more integration in the classroom, more flipped classrooms, more technology, and technology being used as a tool, not as a sort of flavor of the day. And so that's a dramatically different way of teaching in the classroom. So I want to thank everybody involved. We are also very serious about a closer look at the high school schedule and the time that students come to school. Based on the students' comments this evening, that whole sleeping and research on that is important to us. And so we will continue to research and provide these opportunities for students. And I just wanted to thank everybody that's involved, and certainly the Board of Education for your continued support and leadership.
Thank you, Mr. Prebles. Item 7.2, Technology Plan. Make sure Mr. Broadwater, Mr. Mies.
Before I turn it over to Steve Mies, our Director of Technology, I just want to give you a little preview of what we're doing here. I provided the board with an action plan for technology. At the onset of this year, we wanted to review so that we could come up with a multi-year plan for technology, where we are. There really are two parts of technology, and the presentation we just sat through is one of them, which is actually in the curriculum, in the classroom, using the integration of technology. And then the other part is infrastructure. So we felt that infrastructure should be the backbone of what we're going to do, and so we're going to present that first. And then throughout the year, with the help of Natasha and her team, we are going to continue to look at what we can do in the classroom for the kids, but obviously will not work unless we have the infrastructure set to do that. So what I have up here, the action plan review, the next slide shows you that part of the strategic vision says we're going to provide personalized and authentic learning through 21st century environments, and as you read through that, that's exactly what was just presented to us. So that is, that's the authentic part of being in the classroom and the kids being excited to learn. And you'll notice our Learning Commons throughout the elementaries are all complete now, middle school is complete, and we're looking at the two high schools for those environments, and we're also looking at the infrastructure. And then the next slide says that the measurable objective, develop a multi-year technology implementation plan. Our goal is at the end of this year to have a three-year plan. I will tell you, they say that the studies will say five years is just too long. Technology changes too quickly. What we don't want to do is say it's going to be a three-year plan when we haven't finished because we want to make sure that we're flexible enough to do what we think needs to be done so we can adjust to the kids in the classroom. And then the next slide, the technology, the review. We had a committee, we put it together in October. We've got central office administrators, building administrators, technology department members, and teachers. And we sat down and we took a look at where we wanted to go with this study, and pretty quickly it became evident that we needed to look at infrastructure initially. And the reason is, if you look at what has taken place with all the construction, we've added security, we've added, the security means we've got scanners, the cards, we've got the cameras, we've got a lot of things that are no longer going to be saved on a DVR, they're on the network. And so when they're on the network, it's sucking a lot more off of there, and we need to make sure we're providing everything we can so that those are going to work properly. So at the onset, again, the goal is to review infrastructure as well as the integration of technology and classroom instruction. Upon reviewing the infrastructure and the impact it has on student learning, focus was narrowed to reviewing the infrastructure prior to reviewing the integration of technology, which if you notice on your plan, that is coming soon. We want to get this nailed down, and then we'll proceed. We want to make sure we do it properly without going through it too quickly, but we do want to make sure we provide the instruction that our environments are now allowing us to provide. So with that, the next slide, I am going to turn it over to Steve Mies, our Director of Technology.
Thank you, Mike, and good evening, everyone. Briefly, I just wanted to talk about, we were talking about network infrastructure, and I wanted to just say, the network infrastructure is everything that's behind the walls mostly. You know, we're talking about routers, switches, wireless access points, wireless controllers, cabling, the fiber that connects all the buildings together. We're talking about battery backups, cooling, and other inline devices such as filtering devices that are on the network that are helping us aid in get out to the network. We're also talking about projectors, and as Mike mentioned, we're also talking about video surveillance, access control, and HVAC, which is also on the network now. So we're jumping to wireless access points. So we've made, there's been a big push in the district, obviously, to go as wireless as we can. So briefly, I wanted to talk about, we have access points that are due to be replaced with a new wireless solution. And I've listed the access point counts in all of the buildings, Anderson 105, Turpin 102, et cetera, et cetera. And one of the things that's important note that I wanted to point out here is the access point technology. And this is something that can impact students and the learning that goes on in the classroom. And it's something that a lot of people don't really know or understand, is that when there's an access point, a wireless access point in a room, it will only operate as quickly as the slowest device that's connected to it. So if you have 25 students in a classroom and someone, say, has an old smartphone, something that might be several years old, and it might even be in somebody's pocket and they're not actively using, but it is still connected to that wireless access point. If that device is slower than everything else that's connected to that device, it's going to slow everything else down that's in that room that's connected to it. And what that means is that students will not get the same speed, and there will not be as many students that will be able to connect to that access point. So in general, you can get around 50 students or so connected to an access point, but if there's an old device, you might only be able to get 20 people connected to that access point. And you might not get the throughput that you're looking for for that. So that's something to keep in mind when we're looking at doing these upgrades. There's a really good reason for that. The other thing I wanted to point out was that NAGL, Aaron Sherwood, they recently went through an upgrade process using E-Rate. And when you go through the E-Rate process, those devices, those access points have to stay within the building for five years. So those have been done in the last two to three years, so we have another two to three years in those buildings before we can upgrade those. However, we're looking at the other school buildings to do upgrades in for E-Rate over the next few years. Fiber cabling connectivity. The district is currently going through a process of using what, implementing a technology that's called dark fiber. And what dark fiber means is that it's not actually active until we put something on either end of the connection. And what that means is that we control the speed of that connection, and that's very beneficial to the district because we're not paying for extra bandwidth. So if we wanted to go from, say, a 1 gigabyte solution to a 10 gigabyte solution, we're not going to pay any extra money for that because we have that dark fiber. We can control what goes on either end of that to make that connection. So a dark fiber solution is really the best solution that we can have. Now, we're probably about two months, I think, from finishing that solution. Time Warner, or Spectrum now, is working on finishing that for us. Also, currently, we have bandwidth through HCC that gets us out to the internet. We're looking at, we have a 750-megabyte connection. From time to time, I've noticed as I watch the network traffic, I see that we actually max out on that 750 megabytes. And that can be problematic, especially when we're doing things like online testing. And so my idea, my thought is that we can go to a 1-gigabyte connection, give us an extra 250 meg for the following school year, and that will give us enough bandwidth for the next year or two at least to go through all the online testing and things that we can provide, and we can reevaluate at that time to see if we need any further bandwidth. And the construction projects have dictated that we add more infrastructure, cabling, switches, online devices, things like network access control. So we have to add more fiber, more cabling, and more connectivity. So we're talking about switches and other network gear. So we, currently, we have about 63 switches in Forest Hill School District that are beyond their serviceable life. And what that means is that they're beyond five years old. The idea is that we want to try to get on a plan, a rotation plan, where we're keeping the infrastructure up to date, and that way we can ensure that we provide a quality of service as far as the network goes for all of the learning that has to take place. Now, we're putting a plan in place through the Technology Committee about what that process is going to look like. As Mr. Broadwater mentioned, we're looking at a three-year plan so that we can put something together to try to replace these switches. Obviously, we can't afford to do it all at once, but we'd like to do it in a timely manner so that we can get everybody together and connected at the same speed throughout the district. And then, of course, there's power, battery backups, and cooling. A lot of things, people, things that people don't know is that in the network closets in the, where we have all these switches and all this network gear, we actually do, all these things are on batteries in case that the power fluctuates, power goes down, or there's some other problem. So we want to try to keep the network operating as optimally as possible. And so if there is that problem that happens, there are these big batteries that just sit there, and they manipulate the power as it's coming in so that it's constant and steady. And if the power does drop, the battery kicks in, and all of that network infrastructure is supported by that. And so these are things that we do also have to replace. Every few years, we have to buy new batteries and replace those things. We're also in the process of trying to make sure that all of the network closets and all the network infrastructure is cooled enough so that it doesn't overheat. And we've had that problem here a couple of times already.
And I want to thank Steve for his expertise. I think Steve has a quiz prepared for the board as you got busy. What you see here, this is Kyle Mack, he's one of our specialists here in the Learning Commons at NAGL, and this is what we're about. It's actually instructing students. And if you're not aware, the elementaries, each classroom, a short throw projector, a 43-inch TV, and a Google Chromecast was placed in that, and that's just more technology that's in the hands of our teachers. And this summer, Mr. Fellows and Mr. Spencer will be sitting down, and the high schools, it's now their turn to look at what we are going to order. And Maddox Elementary, as we finish, is the last elementary to finish up. As each classroom gets done, we have been able to install the technology, so that's going very, very well. So are there any questions that you have?
That was my question. So that with, under renovated buildings, there's these switches or these wireless exit points of 145, 50, were those incorporated into the new buildings with the renovation? Or are those, we pull them out of the old buildings? How that works?
What, correct me, but I know the cabling was involved. It's now the actual hardware. When you get into the access points, that was not. So the cabling is up to date and is prepared for that, and now it's just a matter of us updating it.
I think I had kind of the same question. By the time all the renovations are done, are we going to have to start over again? Are we planning far enough ahead? I know we tried to.
I think so. That's the idea of this Technology Committee, and just to get the idea to make sure that we have the plan in place that we won't have to do the start over again kind of thing.
And one example would be at the high school level, we did not order technology for the classrooms that were finished prior to this year simply because we wanted to get it the latest and greatest technology, and the warning starts as soon as you've got it installed. So we waited until we've got the majority of the classrooms that are going to be finished at the end of summer. So that's always a worry that it changes very quickly.
Absolutely.
Questions from the board? Randy?
Can this dark fiber stop? Is that, and that's the cable? Is that, I mean, I'm...
That's actually, that Spectrum is putting together for us, so they have these networks already in the township. And so they're building out the fiber for us, so it's kind of hard for me to explain. But it's the fiberglass that's connecting all the buildings, and that connects us out to HCC so that we get our internet that way as well.
So is that replacing, I mean, I remember when we did this a couple of years ago, there's Cat 4 and Cat 5. Is this like the next generation of that?
So that's copper, and this is fiber. And this is, when I was talking about having a dark fiber solution, we can put the devices on either end of that, and that's going to dictate the speed of that connection. And that's something that we will control and not Spectrum, not Time Warner, not anyone else, and that's very beneficial to us.
Anyone else?
A question?
It's Randy. Go ahead, Randy.
Seeing the number of access points you have, is it true that every student in every building can get online at the same time in their classroom, given the number of access points you have now?
In general, the answer would be yes, but that goes back again to what I mentioned earlier about if there's an older device in the area that's slowing down that access point, that may prohibit somebody from getting on. So the idea is that we do these upgrades to try to increase the probability that everyone is going to have access.
And I'll throw a caveat in there. You always think of one student with one device, but if they've got a laptop and they've got a cell phone sitting on Wi-Fi, that's actually two devices per student. So the amount of access points really is driven kind of by that ratio.
Right.
And the new ones help correct that, so?
Correct, yes.
Where it becomes the biggest problem is during testing. We're not having any issues on testing anymore, right?
In general, no.
That's what I was getting at.
You can't, the teachers and the administrators are whispering to themselves. Any other questions? Thank you.
Okay. All right. Item 8.1, we have a contract with the Ohio School Boards Association for our treasurer search. Everybody have a chance to review that? And if so, do we have a motion?
I motion to approve the OSBA's retention for the treasurer search.
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Chafay?
Mrs. Barber?
Yes.
Ms. Choice?
Yes.
Dr. Heis?
Yes.
Mr. Bruman?
Mr. Fruman?
Yes.
For the record, I support this, but I wouldn't have been able to vote on it anyway.
Somebody from the OSBA has to sign it. Item eight point two, board discussion. Any items of board discussion? And then Business Operations, nine point one. Are we going to be doing these consent agenda?
All but nine point one.
All but nine point one, so nine point two through what?
Thirteen point one.
Through thirteen point one.
So we'll just do one on point one right there, please.
Yeah.
Awesome. We've got a few change orders to review this evening, and the first one is the nine point one change orders for Anderson High School site. This is for the site. We have the change order eight, which is an owner request replacing damaged lighting conduit, wire, and pole bases. It was, we were unable to determine the party responsible for the damage, so it's listed as owner request. Change order nine is an architect request, design and install missed concrete work near the flagpole, and then remove and replace concrete walk so that we could meet the ADA requirements, and that is change order nine. The superintendent recommends the board approve the change orders submitted by Performance Construction in the amount listed. For nine point...
I moved, yeah, I moved it that we approve subject nine point one, change order at Anderson High School.
Second.
Mr. Jufrey?
Dr. Heiss?
Yes.
Ms. Choice?
Yes.
Mrs. Barber?
Yes.
Mr. Fruman?
Proceed on to nine point two, please.
Very good. For nine point two, the superintendent recommends the board approve the change orders submitted by Seaford Construction at Maddox Elementary. Change order nineteen, first one listed there is code. We had to add some spot smoke detectors on the rooftop units that were installed, add light fixture for a chairlift that was installed. The owner requests, the Maddox office wanted to relocate a fax line, and again, that was a building request. Unforeseen conditions, the changing of a basement paint type at Maddox Elementary, and architectural request was cut down the size of kindergarten shelving, which is oversized for the age group. It was basically so that the students could reach the shelving that was there. Change order twenty was an architect request, install heaters in restrooms where no replacement fixture was included in the design. Add light at the bottom for the exterior ramp so that they could see, and that was an oversight by the design. Change order twenty-one was owner request, change the description of space on several room signs. There were signs that were listed inappropriately. We went through and made sure we corrected that. Next, for nine point three, change orders for Mercer Elementary. Superintendent recommends the board approve the change orders submitted by Mark Spaulding Construction in the amount listed there. The change order thirty-seven were some various charges. The owner request was to add drain in a classroom. As you can see, we're able to receive a credit for premium time on the dates listed as we went through and discussed that item. Architectural request was a demo portion of existing ceiling, which was missed on drawings, and unforeseen conditions, remove portion of roof and deck on connector at Mercer Elementary so we could secure the gutters, and then also furnish and install support plates in that same connector is listed there. For nine point four, the superintendent recommends the board approve the change orders submitted by Mark Spaulding Construction. Change order thirty-five was an architect request, add mixing valves at all sinks omitted from specifications, provide power to internal heater on chiller, which again was omitted from specifications. And then the code and an architect request was install light at the top of the wheelchair lift, which was designed. Change order thirty-six was owner's request, prep and paint the soffit at the old entrance, and then also request for the parking lot striping at Summit Elementary. And we have, next, last one there, for Business Operations, superintendent recommends the board approve the change orders submitted. This is going to be, that is the same one we forgot. I'm looking at Wilson. For Wilson Elementary, the superintendent recommends the board approve the change orders submitted by Century Construction in the amount listed. Change order twenty-seven, owner request was agreed upon overtime in order to ensure that the building will be ready for the start of the school year. I would remind the board that at the start of that, the bayou actually has come down quite a bit as we went through that process. Change order twenty-eight, architect request, install proper power for operation of doors at main entrance, and drawings did not include that, so that is what we have with that. So again, those are the change orders that we have.
Before we move on, any other questions about any of the change orders? I will add for the benefit of those in the audience who are watching on TV, while Mr. Broadwater goes through that information fairly quickly, it's not new to us. We get this information in advance of the board meetings. We have the opportunity to ask questions about these change orders and other issues on tonight's agenda, and we do, and those questions are vetted for us and responses are received by, by us before the board meetings. These board meetings are really to confirm the work that has already been done. We don't generally do the work at the board meetings. We also get a detailed spreadsheet that tracks the change orders, allows us to see how we're doing the budget. Got a copy of that up here. We do look at these things. And so while we go through these things quickly each night, it's not the first time we've seen them. Thank you, Mr. Broadwater.
And just to echo what Mr. Fruman says, we do, we do get quite a few questions from the Board of Education, making sure that they understand the change orders.
So one last thing. The issue I abstain on, I abstain because Performance Construction is a client of my law firm, so I can't vote on their change orders. That's why that one was done separately. If there's no questions, item nine point six is a facilities update.
Oh, okay. I'll do it after you.
Okay. Mr. Zimmer's not here this evening, but the good news is, at Maddox Elementary, we have our final occupancy. So we are basically down to two projects left. We still have a few punch list items, and that's going to take a little bit of time for us. But as you can see, Maddox Elementary has been a, a project that's turned out very, very well. We had the furniture and the technology ordered, so as those classrooms came online, they were ready to go, and Maddox is in good shape, and we're very excited for that. The two projects left, Turpin High School and Anderson High School. Turpin High School, you see the progress that we've made through there. I will tell you that every week, I get to sit in a construction trailer with Mr. Spencer and with Mr. Fellows, and we go through all the items that our principals have concerns about, and make sure that we're listening to them so that we, we can match what the students need in the high schools. What I would hit with Anderson and with Turpin, as we near the summer cycle, at Turpin, we are looking at designing the Learning Commons, which is going to go online at the end of the summer. What we did with our elementaries at the Learning Commons was, we had an architect design what they thought it would be. We let our principals and students look and see if they felt that that was going to fit. And then, once we had that, we went through and put that out to bid to make sure we got the best pricing on the furniture and technology in the Learning Commons. So Turpin, the Learning Commons, we're in the process of looking at the architect and getting a design. I would like to thank Megan Lawson and Tricia Underwood for all their help with high school furniture. That's the project we've now entered. And high school furniture, we've got a lot, a lot of classrooms coming online all at once, and that's a big chore. And with high school, it's a lot of work to meet with all the teachers. So thank you very much as you go through that. With Turpin and Anderson, as we go through the process, the technology is still going to be the same as what was with the elementaries. You'll have a short throw projector and a 43-inch TV and a Chromecast in each classroom. The Learning Commons, we're going to look at what the architect has designed for technology in those, and then we'll tweak it as our students and our administrators see fit for those, for those areas. So the progress continues at Anderson. I would say, right now, we are looking at a phasing process. Mr. Fellows is extremely involved in, and we're excited about moving forward with that. And at Turpin, as we move forward, again, the Learning Commons is going to be a big project for us in the summer, getting that designed. Any questions?
I don't have a question, I have a comment. I know there's constantly a lot of questions about the progress at Anderson High School. Part of our contract on that project included a performance bond, which means if we had issues with our contractor, there was an insurance company standing behind them to step in and complete the project. And unfortunately, we did have problems with our contractor. Unfortunately, we do have a solid insurance company that has stepped in to perform. The insurance company is Travelers. They're a strong insurance company, substantial net worth, more than able to fund what is necessary to complete that contract. No doubt, they're not, we're happy with it, but they're now the party with whom we have our contract, because under the bond, the insurance company steps into the shoes of the contractor. So that's who we deal with. And it's up to them to decide who they want to work with to complete the contract, but they're required to complete that contract at no additional cost to us beyond the issues that we may add through change orders as we have with every other project in the district. Did I get that right?
That is correct.
And as that relationship unfolds, we continue to learn more on a daily basis. Mr. Broadwater, myself, and others in our organization have met with the Travelers leadership team, as well as the Vertex team that's working with Travelers, try to come to resolution on the upcoming phasing for the summer work, which has been a lot different than what we originally had planned. And some of that planning actually takes out some of the swing space and makes it a more efficient switch for our students and our staff, with the goal of trying to get the actual learning environment of the building completed prior to doing the back of the building where the new multipurpose room would be in. And so in doing that, it's taken a little bit of a different turn, but nonetheless, should hopefully speed up the process as we get closer to phasing over the summer and getting that work accomplished. And I know there are a lot of people at the Anderson site who have concerns and who are waiting for additional information. I know Mr. Fellows provides weekly updates. We intend to get back into that building once we have more confirmation on what this looks like, to meet with our parents and our community again, to say, here's what we think this is going to look like once we get this work completed. But that's been quite a bit of negotiation over the last couple of months, just in the process of switching from one company to another and all of the things that are related to that. But it is moving in a positive direction. There are snags. We continue to work through those snags. And one of the things that we continue to work on, and the board has worked on with us, is the parking arrangement at Anderson High School. It has been a significant part of the project. It has been a disappointment, I would say, for me on occasion and for our parents and our students, but we continue to monitor property, we continue to monitor options, we continue to do search, research on this, and we're getting closer to potentially having a recommendation for the Board of Education that will move transportation, the bus compound off of the Anderson site. And so all of these things are happening at the same time, and it's very difficult to try to communicate that because it sometimes changes hourly, not to men, you know, daily, not to mention hourly. So we appreciate people's patience with us as we work through this. This is a significant part of the project, and as Mr. Fruman said, with Travelers onboard, there is an obligation to complete the project at the level of quality and the level of safety that the community expects and our Board of Education expects. So we continue to work on that. It's been slower than what we would like, but we are seeing positive movement forward.
And for those of you that have questions or concerns, we're a phone call away, an email away, we will respond. We understand the concerns. Frankly, we more than share those concerns, and we deal with this every single day. It will get done, and it will get done right. Thank you. Item ten point one, proposed secondary course change descriptions for 2018-19 school year. Ms. Adams?
The attached course descriptions are going to be available for review in the Curriculum Department until the next board meeting in February. What I want to point out to you, I'm not going to read all the descriptions, I know they've been made available to you. We are having, on January 24th, a College Credit Plus meeting at Turpin High School, and then the curriculum nights where parents and students can come to learn a little bit more about the changes in the course guide will be on February 8th at both of our high schools. So Megan has been working closely with the principals, the counselors, everybody to, to prepare for that, that I just wanted to let you know about it. And then item ten point two is elementary school dates. And what we're, I'm bringing this forward to you a little bit sooner than normally, and it's just elementary. It's, it's because we've got more details to work out with high school, but we wanted to get it on the books so that the teachers can start promoting it. What we found this year a little bit was kind of a summer regression with our different kind of calendar. We wanted, we want to make sure we put every kind of opportunity in front of students to be able to bolster their skills and to retain what they learned during the school year. And so we really want to promote summer school in new ways. So those dates will be June 11th through July 20th, and the fees are attached. So the superintendent recommends the board approve the dates and fees for elementary summer school for, during the summer of 2018. And what we do want to point out is the new location. We are taking it out of Nagel Middle School, moving it to Sherwood Elementary. So thank you to Mr. Hamilton for hosting, and I think it'll just be a much better environment for, for our little kiddos. And we will bring the secondary information to you in detail and full at the February meeting.
Great. Thank you. Any questions in Ms. Adams?
I just wanted to add, I had the opportunity to conference with Ms. Adams, and we kind of got to know each other a little better, but most importantly, I was able to understand all the additions and changes that were suggested by teachers, as well as with Natasha's staff, and they also surveyed students. So there's student input into a lot of those course changes, which, by the way, when you see it, they're, they're exciting. Just good stuff that I think students are really going to be excited about. So good job.
Thank you. And they work very hard, so yes, thank you.
Natasha?
Yes?
First, thank you for your detailed answers to my questions this afternoon. The one thing I would like to follow up with you on at some point is the possibility of having a personal finance course mandatory to graduate. I know we, that's feathered into various other coursework, but at some point, not now, but I'd like to follow up with you to better understand what it would take, because that's something I hear from people frequently, about the need to make sure that our students really understand personal finances. And I'll follow up with you later. Thank you.
Sure. And just to clarify, it is a requirement currently. There are just many ways that you can reach that requirement, and we are looking at some, creating a new way to do that. So we'll, we'll be in touch.
Thank you. And DeeDee, thank you for meeting with Ms. Adams in advance. Human resources. Ms. Carnahan?
Item 11.1, A, resignation. Item B, discovers items D, E, G, and H. Item C is a change of salary. Item D would be appointments. The first section there are our replacements for positions. People have resigned and so forth. We had the exception of the instructional aide at Summit, and that is a federally funded, Title I funded position through the end of the school year, plus monitors. An item that you'll see that's new this time, student teachers and interns. You do see a number of student teachers who are with us, along with the cooperating university and the building or department. And, you know, you may notice that there are some of your alma maters there. These special services appointments. There are a number of these. Going on to page four. Item F, board recognition and approval of club sport. It is recommended the board recognize and approve the club sport of indoor track and field at both Anderson and Turpin. This was generated from our coaching staff and our high schools effective January 23rd through March 3rd, 2018. Item G, these are supplementals. Item H, substitute personnel. Last page. Item I, summer school salary schedule. You just heard Mrs. Adams talk to you a bit about summer school, so this is the summer school schedule for this year and the next, actually, the next, this year and two more years. And I did want to let you know, there is a correction I need to make in the FTE information. It is an increase of .05... It is an increase of .05 in bus drivers due to route changes. The report here says .02, but it should be .05.
It's .05.
I'm sorry?
I'm sorry, I was looking at your spreadsheet.
I was just going to say that. The actual FTE reconciliation does show .05, but for whatever reason, the number wasn't written correctly here. So I just wanted to bring your attention to that. And the superintendent recommends the board approve the personnel items as listed.
I don't have any issue at all with the indoor track and field as a new club sport. I'm just curious why on the personnel agenda?
Because we are, if you actually looked in the supplementals, you will also see that we are offering the coaches of this indoor track as their unpaid volunteer supplementals. And so, we just made the determination this was the appropriate place to put it.
Okay.
It probably could have gone somewhere else just as easily, but...
Any questions from anyone else? Thank you, Ms. Carnahan. Item 12.1, E-Rate Assistance Contract. Mr. Mies?
Good evening again. This is a contract for E-Rate Assistance with the company Strategic Management Solutions out of Columbus, Ohio. They will assist in filing for our E-Rate funding for this current year. E-Rate is a federal program that gives us money back in return for connectivity and for infrastructure projects. Does anyone have any questions about this contract? Superintendent recommends the board approve the E-Rate contract with Strategic Management Solutions as shown in the attachments.
Thank you. 13.1, Treasurer's Report. Mr. Jufrey?
Thank you. Item, excuse me, A is just over $4,000 of cash donation, predominantly for after prom. Item B is Statement of Board Account. Item C, D, and E are the general fund receipts and expenditures by function and object at this point in the year, which are very much in line with our forecasted estimates. Item F is our monthly bank reconciliation. And G, investment portfolio. Item H are appropriations that are being amended to increase by $2,498,000 comprised of an increase to the building fund of a million and a half for Anderson High School and the capital projects fund by a million dollars for transportation, and a decrease by $2,000 of the Carl's Perkins Fund. Item I is a request to authorize board service fund payments. And item J is a request to authorize transfers of the previously appropriated funds from the general fund into the building and capital projects fund accordingly. I recommend the board approves this report, as well as consider approval of items 9.2 through 13.1.
Thank you. Any questions? We have a motion. By the way, items 9.6 and 10.1 do not require approval by the board. I move that we approve items 9.2 through 13.1, with the exception of the two that we don't need to approve.
Second?
Mr. Jufrey?
Dr. Heiss?
Yes.
Mrs. Barber?
Yes.
Ms. Choice?
Yes.
Mr. Fruman?
Yes. And item 14.1, Business Advisory Committee Report. Mr. Prummel?
The Business Advisory Council met on Thursday, January 11, 2018, at 7:00 PM in the basement of Central Office. And during the meeting, superintendent, myself, provided a facility update. Mr. Jufrey provided information regarding the January 3, 2018 budget hearing, as well as interim goals for the department regarding efficiencies. Committee members that evening reviewed transportation relocation information. They reviewed the district's property heat map, which shows options of property available. They reviewed department service models and options for efficiency there. The committee also worked on communication strategies for not only transportation, but the facility projects throughout the district. They talked about Anderson High School parking and possibilities there. And the next meeting is 7:00 PM on March 8, 2018, at the District Central Office.
Thank you. Item 14.2, Policy Committee Report.
The Policy Committee has not met this year.
Thank you. 14.3, Human Resource Committee. We've not met since our last meeting. Item 14.4, Finance Committee?
Finance Committee has not met yet this year.
Item 14.5, Curriculum and Student Services. The work we did was the review of the course changes, which Ms. Choice did with Ms. Adams. Beyond that, there wasn't a meeting. Item 14.6, Safety Committee Report?
We have not met.
Item 14.7, Forest Hills Foundation Report?
Jim, I've asked Mrs. Stone to give her report on my behalf, since I'm not there.
She's waving you off. She's standing.
Good evening. I, we have met. The Forest Hills Foundation Board met on January 10th, and we have some exciting things coming up. First of all, let me see, it's good to see all your faces, but it's nice to see some fresh faces up here. Welcome, Mrs. Barber and Mrs. Choice. So tomorrow, we are awarding grants. The Prize Patrol is going out to award the grants. This is the second round for this year. We did one in the fall, and this is, this year, we did it differently, our teacher grants. So we're two awards. The Prize Patrol will be going to schools tomorrow. They don't know we're coming, so it's kind of exciting. We have had, this year, we've had $125,000 in grant requests. We're able to, this year, we will be awarding $22,000. So we're $100,000 different, which means we need to raise lots more money so we can start awarding all of them. So, anyway, in addition to the Prize Patrol, this week, we also, on this coming Sunday, we will have the Interviewing Skills Class. That's for juniors and seniors. They can come in, they have prepared a resume, they've done an online class, and then they can come in, they'll be in this room, actually, doing one-on-one interviews, which is a really good experience for our kids. And then after that, there's a networking. We teach them what networking looks like. And then, on February 3rd, is the Destination Imagination Tournament. We have 36 teams this year. Unfortunately, the tournament is clear on the other side of town, but we did have the appraiser training this past Saturday in this room, so. But we're excited to have 36 teams, and that's thanks to all the sponsors we get at the soiree. And then, the Distinguished Alumni Luncheon will be March 9th. The public's invited. This year's honorees are Dennis "Wildman" Walker. People might remember him from WBN. He's now in Class X Radio. He's an Anderson High School graduate from 1969. Gary Philbin, who's actually Jack Polivka, who's up here earlier, it's his uncle. So Gary Philbin, who's an Anderson graduate in 1975, he is the CEO of Dollar Tree. And Bob Dames, Turpin, 1979, he's the founder of Flip Daddies. And then Claudia Mills, Anderson, she's the VP of Customer Experience and Global Quality at TE Connectivity, and she's Turpin 84. And then, Forest Hills staff member this year is Sandra Coleman, who's a retired English teacher from Anderson. And she, since she's retired, she's very involved with the community. Actually, she's on our teacher grant committee, and she's on a lot of township committees also. And finally, the foundation is hiring an administrative assistant. Yay! Very happy about that. It's a part-time job, 10 to 15 hours a week, so if anybody's interested, they should contact me. They can email me at info@fhfe.org. Oh, and with regard to the Distinguished Alumni Awards, the public's invited to that. If you're interested in signing up to attend, just go to our website at fhf-e.org. That's it.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Legislative Liaison Report. Randy, we do have your handout at our desks.
Okay. You can read some of the key points about the state legislative activity. One thing I wanted to point out is I'll be representing, well, actually, leading the Ohio delegation at the National School Board Association Advocacy Institute, formerly called the Federal Relations Network in Washington, DC, next week. This is an opportunity to meet with Senator Portman, Senator Brown, and our Ohio congressmen, to give them information on key education, federal education issues, and hopefully influence how they vote. Some of the key educational-related issues are listed in the report in the last two pages. This year, there are nine of them, which is twice as many as we normally tackle, but there's a lot going on at the federal level. If any of the board members have any comments or questions about this, I'd be happy to catch up with you one-on-one to discuss it.
Excellent. Thank you for both the update and for the handout in advance. We always save the best for last. The Forest Hills Teachers Association Report. Ms. Laber?
First of all, thanks, Mr. Fruman, and welcome to being president. And I want to make sure tonight I welcome Ms. Barber and Ms. Choice. We're really excited that you guys are here tonight, and welcome for a great, exciting year, and we've got great things to happen. With that, I just want to make sure, on behalf of the association, there's a couple of things tonight. We did not have a report in December, so I have a couple things I want to go over. And the first one, and probably the most important piece for us, is December was an extremely monumental moment for us in the district, as the Teacher Association and the district, the board, from our negotiations, we agreed that we were going to make a district advisory board and building advisory boards for each of our nine buildings. And Mrs. Carnahan and I, and with our liaison with Bill Dieter, School Board Attorney, and Kitty Borger from OEA, we successfully, for the very, very first time that I'm aware of, were able to put every principal, assistant principal, our building reps, and our leaderships into situations where they could work together and kind of make sure they understood the process. And what we hope to do with that is create a system that allows our buildings to work together at the building level to solve problems. And then, our district-level committee, which is made up of the FHTA president, myself, Vice President, Mr. Mike Roberts, and Dan Armstrong, our delegate at large, Mr. Prevels, Ms. Carnahan, and Mr. Broadwater and I, then, for our district board that meets once a month. And the goal is that we don't have to meet once a month. But I think that those kinds of options, and it was just really, really awesome for us to have that chance. So, we, I looked at it and kind of looked at, we've had three trainings overall, and we had over, probably about, probably about 45 to 50 of our employees working together to solve those things. So that was a major spot for us. I'm very excited to report that. Second thing is, I'm just going to share, this just came out, I ran this off for you. And this is, by the way, Randy, you'll like this.
What's that? We've got a handout.
We have a handout, and I'm sorry, I'll be glad to forward it to you. OEA, it's about the ECOt students, and it was from President Becky Higgins, and I really liked this today. She kind of points out that with several of the things that are happening, obviously, we all know about ECOt. It says, "I think parents will find a hospitable environment in local public schools where students are taught by dedicated professionals who care deeply about serving the educational needs of children in their classrooms. Local public schools provide a stimulating experience for students where they are given every opportunity to reach their full potential. OEA encourages ECOt parents to take a look for themselves." So, OEA sent this out in a public media statement, and I think it kind of goes here to say, I know we have students in our community and so forth, but OEA is very aware of the changes in legislation, and it's one of our major aspects from the association, to stay on top of that, so that our students and our community are aware, that our teachers are here to serve the public good. And that's kind of an interesting little tidbit there. Lastly, the association will be participating in three upcoming lobby days from the, just like with Mr. Smith discussing, we have lobbying days for federal-state opportunities coming up ourselves within the next week, and also serving in the large presidents' association meetings that are here in Columbus as well. This year, we'll be sending a leadership team to work with those items. FHTA will be submitting three leadership grants. We have been awarded several grants throughout the school years over the past, and this year, we're looking for a $12,000 opportunity. And with that is to help, just like, I know Mrs. Carnahan and I are working on ways to serve together, to help make sure that our teachers are getting the trainings and different things that we can do to work together on that. I want to thank Mrs. Stone, since she was just up prior to me, and also to kind of give a little PR promotion. The district employees will be working with the foundation next month as we kick off our Love the Learning campaign. And that'll start on February 1st. So be on the lookout, all the employees and the teachers and the association will be working directly with the foundation for that. Any questions?
No, and thank you for the comment on OEA and ECOt.
Yeah.
I mentioned exactly that same thing to my wife yesterday.
Did you?
The closing on ECOt was, well, there's public schools.
There are public schools, and we're here to, you know, help serve, and, you know, I know that will be in some law discussions for many, many months ahead, but we are here to help provide public service for our students and the community.
So as a quick, a quick overview for those who don't know, ECOt is a, the electronic classroom of tomorrow is one of the largest schools in the country because it's all online. The students that went to that got a portion of funding from the, from the state. They're not beholden to many, if any, of the rules that we are, which caused some significant difficulty when they tried to find out how many students were actually part of this giant school. They found out that they could only accommodate, I believe it was, well, there was extra $60 million or something, that of, of students that they couldn't even say ever logged on that they were counted. And they've been through the, to say that it's not fair, that they actually have to take, or count the people that are in their own classrooms, which we do every year, all the, you know, the public schools have to do to, for our funding. They didn't think it was fair for that. For one year, it was $60 million. And that's the only year that, so far, that they've, they've looked at. So the odds are that it's been happening for a long, long time. And despite the fact that they don't have any buildings, they had, you know, funding for their permanent improvement, and they've said that, well, they can't afford to exist without that money. And the state, to their credit, at least for that one year, said, well, that's, you know, actually, we're just looking at one year. And now, they're going through and saying, well, that we're closing the schools. And that's one of the things that all of the districts in the state, I mean, there is still a number of people, we don't know how many, because we don't know how many people that actually have, have gone through, but are welcoming, welcoming them back into our public schools.
And I appreciate that. I think the, one part of that for me, and as I think the teachers here, it's a loss for the students in Ohio. And it's unfortunate that it took, you know, years of somebody finally putting their foot down and saying, you're going to have to show us some outcomes from this, and, you know, we have students who lost services. So with that in mind, I think I'm real proud of the association and from OEA standpoint to kind of help say, we're here to serve kids. And that's what we want our governor to hear, that teachers are here and school districts are here to help serve the public good in the state of Ohio. Thank you.
Can I make a comment?
Mm-hmm.
I just want to say that it, it's very apparent and evident that teachers in Forest Hills School District work hard.
Thank you.
And that they care about kids, and we appreciate that.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Especially, you know, it's cold weather, and the kids are back into school, we're getting them to go, and, you know, I'm really excited tonight to have the kids, and they did their displays, and they are talking about that. Those kinds of days make for a good day. So, thank you so much. I do appreciate that.
Thank you, Ms. Laber.
To follow up on that, Mr. Fruman, we, Mr. Eckert, through Mrs. Ryan's department, has reached out to the parents and students from ECOt so that we can help them understand how our school system can provide similar opportunities for them, and actually, much better opportunities. Similar mode of, of communication, but certainly a more robust program, we think. And I know you said that, that we save the best for last, so I did want to get in that today is Mr. Spencer's birthday.
Oh, wow.
And...
That's why I said that.
When I asked him earlier today how old he was, he said 69, and I think he looks great for 69. Really, really great. So, happy birthday. Yes, happy birthday to you.
All right. Item 15.1, Executive Session.
Before we go into executive session, our next regularly scheduled board meeting is February 26, 2018, 7:00 PM.
Is it at the Anderson Center? Is that right? That's what this says. Location, Anderson Center. That's wrong.
That's a typo.
We'll be here. We don't expect to take any action after executive session. So, thank you, everybody, for coming. Forrest?
So I move that pursuant to Ohio revised code section 121.22G1, here we move that the board adjourned to...
the board adjourn to, okay, to executive session for the purpose of considering the appointment, employment, dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, compensation of a public employee or official. And also pursuant to Ohio Revised Code 121.22G2, I hereby move that the board adjourn to the executive session for the purpose of considering the purchase of property for public purposes or the sale of property at competitive bidding, since disclosure at this time would give an unfair competitive or bargaining advantage to persons whose personal private interest is adverse to the general public interest, as almost as that sounds. And that's it.
Second?
A second.
Mr. Giuffre?
Dr. Heiss?
Yes.
Mrs. Barber?
Yes.
Ms. Choice?
Yes.
Mr. Fruman?
Yes. Thank you, everyone. Randy?